We good? Okay. All right. I am pleased to call to order the February 17, 2022, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Note the presence of all three commissioners. And I'm going to ask Mr. Tom Landauer to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Let's start with a few opening comments this morning. As usual, I will begin with a quick COVID-19 update. We continue to see a steady decrease in our COVID-19 indicators each week, which is great news. Our current positivity rate is 10.9% and our total seven-day average of cases is 138.4. This is down from a seven-day average of 218.7 and a positivity of 15.33% just one week ago. So this is great progress. Hospitalizations are also trending downward, with 115 patients hospitalized yesterday, down from a peak of 669 on January 12. Sadly, though, with this very large increase in cases, we have also seen an increase in deaths. From the time of our last meeting on February 3 through last Saturday, February 12, 28 Montgomery County residents had been reported to have lost their lives due to COVID-19. The majority of these individuals were unvaccinated or partially vaccinated. The best way to protect yourself from serious disease, hospitalization, and death is to get vaccinated and boosted for maximum protection against the virus and its variants. And I do want to stress the importance of that booster dose if you're due for one. Like many vaccines, the strength of the COVID-19 vaccine decreases over time, and a booster dose, if you're due for one, will give you the best protection from serious disease. The good news is our data shows that 95% of eligible Montgomery County residents who are over the age of five, five or older, have received at least one dose of the vaccine. And we do believe that the majority of these folks are fully vaccinated, but not enough people are getting boosters. So again, just want to stress that. We do have plenty of vaccine supply, and anyone who's unvaccinated can just walk into any of our clinics. If you're eligible for a booster dose, you do need to make an appointment, but we have all of the vaccines available, and you have the option of picking which booster dose you would like. I'm also pleased to share that in partnership with the Montgomery County Immunization Coalition, we have four community vaccine clinics coming up this week. Tonight, the 17th, at Bethel AME Church in Ardmore from 5:00 to 8:00. Tomorrow, February 18th, at Copper Beach Elementary in Glen Side from 3:00 to 6:00. Saturday, February 19th, at Bethlehem Baptist Church in Spring House from 10:00 to 1:00. And Sunday, the 20th, at Baharatia Temple Cultural Hall in Chalfont from 10:00 to 1:00. Registration and other information on these events can be found on the county's website calendar at moncopa.org/calender. Free PCR COVID-19 testing remains readily available at our sites across the county. And the turnaround time is back to its normal. Most people get their results back within two days or less, and so we encourage you, if you do want to get a PCR test, to please do so. And of course, free rapid-at-home COVID-19 tests are available for order to receive by mail. You can go to covidtests.gov, test with an S, covidtests.gov, and order your free test to have some at home, which I encourage you to do. Finally, I do want to acknowledge that the Montgomery County Office of Public Health is receiving questions about the office's recommendations for masking in schools. First, I want to reiterate that there are currently no county-imposed mask mandates in any Montgomery County public school. Masking policies in Montgomery County public schools are under the purview of the elected school board, who is charged with approving a health and safety plan for their school district. The Montgomery County Office of Public Health has consistently followed the science and data-based recommendations of the CDC and the Pennsylvania Department of Health in developing the recommendations that the Office of Public Health shares with our schools. The Office of Public Health provides regular support to our schools on masking and a number of other COVID mitigation measures, such as assurance testing, test-to-stay, and mask-to-stay. The Office of Public Health will continue to review recommendations as COVID-19 evolves from a pandemic to an endemic situation and continue to share those recommendations with our schools. Next, I'd like to provide an update on a project that the county's been working on with the municipality of Norristown and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania regarding the Norristown State Hospital grounds. The Norristown State Hospital grounds are owned by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The state hospital first opened its doors in 1880. In recent decades, the site has been managed by the Pennsylvania Department of General Services, and the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services has been responsible for the campus's state hospital operations. The Department of General Services also leases several buildings on the campus to non-Commonwealth agencies, including Montgomery County and several other nonprofit agencies providing health and human services to residents. After decades of discussion, in 2017, the Commonwealth began a process to convey some portion of the Norristown State Hospital land to the municipality of Norristown. The county is enthusiastic about this opportunity that conveying this parcel creates for economic development in Norristown. Since 2017, the county has been a willing partner to ensure that the largest possible parcel of that property can be conveyed to Norristown. This would allow Norristown to develop that property for its best use in alignment with the municipality's overall economic development plan. The county supports Norristown's goals for this parcel. For the last six months, county senior leadership has been meeting biweekly with local elected officials, the Pennsylvania Office of Mental Health, the Pennsylvania Office of General Services, and others to ensure a smooth, seamless, timely transition of this parcel. Action occurred just this week when the parcel was the subject of an agreement of sale at Tuesday night's Norristown Municipal Council meeting. And why we are pleased with this progress, the county operates four programs in buildings located on the parcel that is going to be conveyed. We've been working diligently to find new homes for these programs that serve our most vulnerable residents. These programs support individuals and families that are dealing with mental illness and housing instability. Two programs serve individuals with severe mental illness that may be voluntarily or court-ordered into long-term care. This is a joint program across our southeastern regional counties. Currently, Montgomery County, together with our other county partners, are actively working to establish a new facility to house these most vulnerable residents. The third program is operated by Resources for Human Development, or RHD, who contracts with the county to provide shelter for people facing housing instability. They are actively seeking a location for a new transitional housing program and have designed plans for that new location. The county, at our last commissioner's meeting, dedicated $2 million to support this new venture. Fourth, and finally, we have very good news about Carol's Place, a program that provides short-term treatment in a supportive, home-like environment to adults who are experiencing an acute psychiatric crisis. A building on the Eagleville Hospital grounds will be housing this program. After some minor renovations, this program will move to its new location in July. We look forward to continuing to work with Norristown and the state with the goal of assuring the safety and well-being of our residents currently being served by programs located on the state hospital parcel that is being conveyed to Norristown as they transition to new locations in a seamless manner with the goals of minimal disruption and trauma for them and their families. We also look forward to continuing our strong partnership with Norristown on their economic development and vision for the future. And I just want to take a moment to thank all of our county staff that has been working diligently each day to serve our most vulnerable residents and to keep these critical projects moving forward. I also want to thank the municipal and community partners who are engaged with us on this work. We couldn't do this without you.
Thank you. Good morning. I just have one announcement today. As I mentioned at a previous meeting, the Red Cross is experiencing the worst blood shortage in over a decade and is in need of critical life-saving blood donations. The dangerously low blood supply levels continue to force some hospitals to refer patients for major surgery, including organ transplants. So please consider saving a life by making a blood donation soon. The Narstown Veteran Center is holding a blood drive at the Montgomery County Human Services Building, 1430 DeKalb Street, Narstown, on Friday, March 4, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. You can either call 215-823-5245 or visit redcrossblood.org and use the sponsor code If you can't make the blood drive, you can always make an appointment to donate blood or plasma or platelets at a time that is convenient for you by visiting redcrossblood.org or calling 1-800-733-2767. Thank you. Your donation is desperately needed.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Over the last several months, but particularly in recent weeks, I've heard from a very significant number of parents across Montgomery County that share concerns of their children being forced to be masked in schools here in Montgomery County. And I want these families to know that I hear you loud and clear, and I understand that the negative impact on the social development, the psychological development, and educational development on our children is at great harm due to all this mask-wearing. And in my capacity as Montgomery County Commissioner, I would like to strongly urge the Montgomery County Board of Health, my colleagues if that requires them as well, to lift the recommendations for masks to be required in schools. It's gone on for far too long. It's caused unnecessary harm, and it needs to stop. So I represent a significant number of these families. I want you to know that I've been a voice in opposition to this, these ridiculous recommendations, from very early on, and clearly, it's caused more harm, and it was unnecessary. And Montgomery County government can lead by example in this effort by lifting the mask restrictions for county employees and visitors that come into county buildings, and also the vaccine requirements are being forced on county employees who otherwise need to be tested weekly. It's too long. It's time to get back to a sense of normalcy, and our children should not be harmed by this, and that's a population that's receiving the greatest harm. So again, to all those families, I'll continue to do my best to bring common sense solutions to this serious problem, and again, urge supportive health to change the recommendations and allow masks to be optional in all 22 school districts in Montgomery County. From my understanding, most daycares, private schools, and parochial schools have already made masks optional in their schools, and it's time that the public schools do so as well. So I'd like to put that on the record. Thank you.
Okay. We will move on to public comment on matters appearing on today's agenda. Francisco Francisco.
It appears we only have general public comment today.
Okay. All right. So we'll move on to that. Ms. Carter, could you please read the guidance, please?
Yes. All speakers present should sign the sheet available in the back of the room. All speakers present must come to the podium if they are physically able. Speakers should identify themselves by name and municipality. All public comments must be relevant or germane to county business. Under the law, this means that the subject matter of all comments must be limited to items or issues which are currently before the commissioners for consideration or vote or which may come before the commissioners for a vote at a future meeting. Whether a matter is germane to county business is a determination to be made by a county solicitor. Comments regarding masking in schools are not germane to county business, as this board takes no vote on this issue. These comments are not appropriate at this meeting and should be shared with your local school board. Profane, slanderous, or discriminatory language or comments will not be tolerated. A time limit of two minutes will be monitored by county staff. The board is not required to respond to public comments during the course of the meeting, so the public is reminded that it is not an opportunity for dialogue or a question-and-answer session. The board chair may direct appropriate county staff to follow up on any questions or additional comments after the meeting. Disrupted behavior, including but not limited to yelling from the seats, arguing whether a matter is germane to county business, once the solicitor has made a determination, or refusing to yield the floor, once time has elapsed and being requested to sit down shall be grounds for removal from the meeting without further admonishment or warning. As always, the commissioners welcome written correspondence, comments, and feedback at
Okay. Okay. We will begin with in-person public comment. First is Pauline Bracchio.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Pauline Bracchio. I'm from Tomlinson. Thank you, Joe, so much for your comment. I really appreciate it, and I know a lot of other people in this county do. And actually, you have just made it county business by what you said. And we know that the county has a lot to do with this because the buck does stop here. You are the ultimate because you are the Chair of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. And from what I understand, you also influence the school boards a lot by giving them money if they're running you to donate to their campaigns to specific people. I know that in North Penn School District, it's Mr. Casa, and I think maybe Mr. Fusco, but I'm not sure about that. So you have a lot of sway here. And from what I understand from the new North Penn School District Health and Safety Plan, as long as the...
It's fraction. Got you. Yep. That would be before the North Penn School District.
Yeah, I go there, too. Thank you, Maureen. So anyway, what I'd like to know is...
So if you have to go on to your next comment.
Will you let me go on, and then you'll see how it connects? You know, you can sit...
If it's regarding masking, it doesn't connect.
It's regarding a lot of things, and...
We move on to the next comment.
You know, I only have two minutes, Maureen. You can wait two minutes. Anyway, as I was saying, you have a lot of influence over this, and we don't... How can we even go to the Board of Health, as Josh had suggested to Mr. Corman two weeks ago? They only have, what, three or four meetings a year, first of all. Then, so you're sending us to the Board of Health, the school district is sending us to the county, and it's just a very circular route that gets us nowhere. So it's very disingenuous for you to say you have no...
Thank you. Your time is up.
...possibility to have any influence over them. Yeah, I heard you. You took up my time. So, you know, at least when Shelley Smith was here, she would stop the clock if she had to interrupt someone. You and Josh have no manners.
Next, we have Jamie Kaplan.
Good morning.
Good morning. Commissioner Gail, thank you so much for your comments. To have somebody in a public position actually acknowledge the pain that parents and children are experiencing means a lot. And I'm here to talk about the transmission metrics that are put out by the county. And yes, that's related to schools, but I'm going to talk. I have seen Montgomery County do nothing but to put children last for two years. Our schools were some of the last in the state and county to reopen, and now our children continue to be masked in Montgomery County because you refuse to budge on outdated, meaningless metrics. And the majority of schools in this county refuse to do anything but blindly follow your guidance because of political pressure and pressure from the teachers' unions. Right now, there are three cases of COVID in my child's school district, one student and two staff. Five of the school buildings are COVID-free, yet our school board is voting tonight to tie masks to your substantial phase, which is essentially mask-required unless we somehow drop below 35 cases of COVID at any one time in our geographic area of 35,000 people, regardless of the rate in school, regardless of hospitalizations, regardless of the 94% vaccination rate that you were just mentioning. And they have made it clear that if they do somehow get to 35 cases per 35,000, if we go to 36 cases, the kids will be masked up again. This has to stop. It is cruel. It is unconscionable. It is so egregious that other states in this country have made it illegal to force masks on children. Meanwhile, numerous healthcare professionals are now saying that the harms of masking outweigh the benefits. Dr. David Rubin of CHOP Policy Lab told NBC 10 on February 7, "This is a moment to start begin talking about removing the scaffolding and trying to reduce the restrictions that have been placed on kids because the risks in terms of their mental health, in terms of continued learning loss, those types of things are far greater than the virus itself," end quote. Much of Bucks County has been mask-optional for months. They are faring no differently than the schools here. 64 of 67 school counties in Pennsylvania are mask-optional. Europe never masked elementary school children. More than half of our country has been mask-optional for the entire school year.
Thank you for your comments.
They are doing fine. Please change this. It has to change.
Next, we have Andrew Corman.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Gail, for opening the door. On March 12, 2020, everything changed because of some maniacs who are deranged. Here where we live, Montgomery County, schools shut down. It was super unfortunate. I wanted to frown. Remote learning started. No one was ready for the CoronaCon party. We were all told, "Two weeks, that's it. Slow the spread." What they didn't tell you is what they really want is your hard-earned bread. In Montgomery County, businesses closed, essentials remained, remote work started. Now, most of us were in waters uncharted. COVID-19 disease is 100% germane to the business of Montgomery County, as Chair Arcoosh speaks about at all the public meetings to open the comments. The medical-industrial complex sees we, the people, as their bounty. Now, many of us are awake to this disparity operation. I truly hope we, the people, do not see the fall of a nation. A great, great man, Benjamin Franklin, once said, "Rebellion to tyrants is obedience to God." During these past 23 months, Montgomery County has spent taxpayer money promoting social distancing, contact tracing, testing, lockdowns, mask-wearing, vaccines, and so much more. The outcome of these mitigation measures has proven to be disastrous. Youth depression is at an all-time high, not good. Suicides are rising, heart attacks, many other health ailments are also on the rise as a direct result of this plandemic. There are lots of mom bears and poppa bears here in Montgomery County who are ready to see their kids smile again in school. It's time to make mask-wearing in Montgomery County schools the choice of the parents. It is stated in the...
Thank you. Your time is up.
In Section 800 Code 806 that it is child abuse to interfere with a child's breathing.
We will now move to those logged in via Zoom. Next up is Joan Parsons. You can unmute yourself.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We can hear you.
Yes, how... Okay, first of all, I would like to say that I hope all the viewers look up 18 U.S. Code 241, Conspiracy Against Rights, which is part of our Constitution and all our rights. Number two, I would like to talk about the nursing home and those poor patients that never got early treatment that should have been given to them, which could have eliminated a lot of their deaths. I also would like to understand why we do not... You tell us the deaths, but you don't say how many that are in the nursing homes, that, again, their deaths are horrific, but again, they didn't get early treatments. The other thing I'd like to say is there's 222 counties that are optional mask deaths. And I would also like to say, in Springfield Township, we have gone through our board, and our board has said that you are the ones that we have to talk to. I would also commend Commissioner Gail for how he spoke today, and I appreciate everything that he does, and I know there are hundreds of us that are looking at this next election and who we vote in. Now, getting back to the early treatments, they're still telling people that have had to get COVID on any test, PCR, or the rapid test, which is not accurate, that my physician said, "Well, you have to wait basically until you can't breathe and then go to the emergency room." I find that very upsetting, since this type of COVID can be treated early on, and there are treatments that millions of people are using, and you know it's ivermectin. And ivermectin was also listed in the NIH paperwork as a approved treatment, along with your remdesivir...
Thank you. Your time is up.
Okay. Next, we will go to Katie Calabrese. You can now unmute yourself.
My name is Katie Calabrese. I live in Wynwood, Pennsylvania. I have sent the Montgomery County Office of Public Health several emails about this topic. I'm giving my comment anyway, even though you said it's not germane. My comment is in direct response to Dr. Arcoosh's introductory remarks regarding COVID guidance in schools. It does not matter that the county's guidance is not binding. If the guidance is out of date, unreasonable, and unhelpful, it is useless. Monco's current guidance requires outdoor masking regardless of vaccination status at our current level of transmission. This does not make sense, and you know it. Lower Marion School District has asked the OPH for support in developing off-ramps to step down its COVID mitigations, and they have not gotten the support they need. School boards are not doctors. They need your help. Please give it.
Next, we will go to Amanda Olson. You can now unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. It is my understanding that the Montgomery Public Health has been unresponsive and inactive to the requests of many school districts in the county for assistance in updating their health and safety plans. They would like to reduce mitigations within their schools, but considering many school districts in the area are being sued for making masks optional and reducing mitigations, school districts need health agencies to direct them so that they have a leg to stand on. Our Lower Marion Superintendent, along with many other superintendents in Montgomery County, submitted a proposal to Monco Health, asking them to review it and approve it, because Monco Health would not respond to them. And we've been informed that Monco Health has not responded whatsoever and is following outdated metrics of the CDC. The CDC said two weeks ago that these decisions need to be made on a local level, yet Monco Health has done nothing to update or address the concerns of these superintendents in the area. I mean, we're not talking about some Joe Schmel on the block. We're talking about highly-paid, highly-intelligent superintendents pleading for your help. It's shameful. It's disgraceful. The Montgomery County School District is very angry with you. We have been very supportive of Monco Health for a long time, but I'm telling you right now, the people who are supporting you are turning their backs on you left and right. Children are being forced to mask outside, eat silent lunches, silent lunches, due to outdated metrics and the unwillingness of your department to lead. Children are being subjected to loneliness and isolation due to your incompetence and your impotence. You must implement new guidelines and give our children the opportunity to return to normal with the same passion and vigor that you had when you ripped them out of school in March of 2020 and when you would not let them return to school after winter break in December 2021.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Shame on you!
That concludes our public comment.
Thank you. Oh, okay. And when you're done, could you just sign in?
Yes.
Sure. And are you here to talk about a matter on the agenda or just general public comment?
Well, is ARCA on the agenda?
Not for a vote, but you can certainly address it as general public comment.
Okay. May I take my mask off?
No.
No, okay. All right, well, huh? Well, listen to this...
We would prefer that you didn't.
Render Caesar what is Caesar's, right? Okay, so first and foremost, I'd like to thank Jesus for saving the world. Many people struggle to believe in Him because He's referred to as the Son of God. He is so because of His soul. His soul is in total lock, except with God's Holy Spirit, and we are God's children, be it a soul, not the body. We are living souls, not living bodies. My name is Ali Shavini, Director of the Norristown Company. The federal government borrows and spends money on subsidized housing... The federal government borrows and spends money on subsidized housing. We use it and have no way of returning it. We are proposing to use public debt proceeds to make one-time investments in assets that house folks based on their income without the need for housing vouchers, or a voucher subsidy. The units would be built with high quality, meeting the expectations of high-income earners, but within reach of hard-working people willing to work 40-hour weeks at $11 an hour. The investments would earn a taxpayer return while addressing housing affordability and living quality. We are seeking funding to prove the model at this county level through American Rescue Plan funds, and the return would eventually be used to help, the return that would eventually be used to help offset the federal budget deficit will be contributed, or intended to be contributed, to Montgomery County's Housing Authority. The expectation is for the money to be used assisting, to be used assisting people finance their first homes. So this is what we're seeking for, through the American Rescue Plan funds. We understand that there's a portion of it, or there is allocation, or it's earmarked to address some of the inflationary effects of COVID. Housing affordability is one of them, and we're seeking, good job, Adam. And that's Adam. He's actually is doing awesome today. He's got a lollipop that, you know, I know that he's like way better than I am, because when I used to have lollipops, I would crunch on them before you get to like the end of it, and he's so patient that he gets to like the end of it without crunching it. So that's, that's impressive. That's hope, right? So we thank Jesus for that. And the reason I'm constantly thanking Jesus is, without Jesus, our souls, you know, our souls belong to God, and that was the recognition, and we found consciousness through Jesus. So, thank you very much for the time. Hope you guys enjoy your day. Jesus loves you also. I know that it's probably tough hearing some of these comments, but-
Thank you.
People just want to feel free. Thank you.
For your awareness, if you want, if you're able to stay, Mr. Bonner, in a few minutes, we'll be giving an update on the ARCA process and how community groups can apply-
Yeah, we've been trying, yeah. We've been-
For ARCA funding. So if you are able to sit by, otherwise, it'll be town halls that you can attend to get all that information.
Okay. All right, Ken, or Commissioner Ken, very nice to see you.
All right, we will move on. That's it, right?
We'll get more sugar.
We do have a few other folks online.
Oh, I thought we were done with the online.
They, their hands were just raised during the last comments.
Okay.
Next, we have Christina Chang. You can now unmute.
Thank you, Christina Chang, Lower Marion Township. Some of the school districts in Montgomery County believe that in order for the Montgomery County Department of Health to continue support-
I'm gonna interrupt you. If this is something that should be brought before your school district, you should do that.
No, it relates to Monco's support, and so, right now, the county's-
Is it something that the county commissioners will vote on?
It's the, it's something that the commissioners can clarify. The school districts believe that Monco will only continue supporting the school districts with free supplies and testing and masks if they require mandatory masking. And so there is some hesitation to make their own rules, because there's language that they believe exists in your policy that states that mandatory masking is required for best state, test state, and the free supplies. And if you can clarify that you'll continue their support, no matter what decision they make, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, finally, we have Laurie Bomar. You are able to unmute.
Hi. If the county commissioners have no say in what our school boards do, or if it's just recommendations, then I think you need to come out and make a firm statement that they are absolutely 100% able to go against everything that the public health is recommending. Because you have us trapped. You have our children trapped with these ridiculous mitigations. My children would like to know why their cousins in other parts of the country can go to school without masks and without the worry of being quarantined. This is absurd. COVID is not dangerous for these children, and yet you are punishing them. This is what it is. It is punishment. They want to go to school. They want to see their friends' faces. They want to experience all the things they're supposed to experience in school. I think you have forgotten that school is supposed to be fun for children. Instead, by absolving yourself of anything and just saying, oh, it's up to the schools, but at their peril, if they don't follow our mitigations, they're gonna, you know, it'll be terrible. You're ruining their time.
Thank you. Do you have a comment that will come before the board?
My comment is to unmask our children.
Okay, you should take that to your local school board.
I have, and I've taken it to you. I've emailed you multiple times, and you ignore me.
Thank you for your comment.
This is going to bite you in the butt.
That concludes public comment.
Okay. Thank you. You cannot interrupt, I'm sorry. No. We're gonna move on to approval of the minutes. I will move to approve the February 3rd, 2022 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Okay, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Ms. Calder.
No. You, you cannot disrupt the meeting. Please sit down or, or leave the meeting. Please, no, you don't. You cannot disrupt the business of the board. Please leave or sit down. Please leave or sit down.
All right, we will move on to an update on the Emergency Rent and Utility Program. Kaylee Silver, are you online?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Am I able to turn my camera on? All right. There we go. Good morning, Commissioners. Hi. Good morning, Commissioners and staff. I'm Kaylee Silver, the Administrator for the Montgomery County Office of Housing and Community Development, and thank you for the opportunity to highlight the assistance we've been able to deliver lately through the Your Way Home Emergency Rent and Utility Coalition. Kelly, am I able to pull up my slides? Yes, great. And you can see these, yes?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful, thank you. This morning, I'm gonna highlight the funds we've been able to directly disperse into the community in the, in the form of emergency rent and utility assistance. The Emergency Rent and Utility Coalition Program, or ERIC, helps people with up to 18 months of rent and utility assistance for households in Montgomery County who are renters and have been impacted in some way financially by the COVID-19 pandemic. A pilot version of the program launched in September 2020, and here on this slide, you're able to see the amount of rent and utility financial assistance our nonprofit partners are getting directly into the community. We launched a pilot version of the program in September 2020, and at that time, we were working with four nonprofits in the community. This iteration of the program ended in the very beginning of 2021, where you'll see that red line, and then by March of 2021, we launched the full expanded version of the program as funded by the federal U.S. Treasury Department. We now partner with six nonprofits who are directly involved with their communities to deliver financial assistance quickly, compliantly, and officially, efficiently, excuse me, directly to people in need. As you can see, we are averaging $3.8 million in financial assistance delivery per month. And then as of February 2nd, at the bottom, you'll see we have distributed $46,866,958 directly to Montgomery County renters. Specifically, this assistance has helped 4,842 unique households, consisting of 11,665 people, and we're continuing to process applications and assist renters. So this next slide, again, demonstrates our success in getting this crucial life-saving money out into the community. This graph shows financial assistance delivered to renters per month. So as you can see, assistance has steadily increased, with our providers hitting a peak in delivering assistance in the fall of 2021, and you'll note this is about when the federal eviction moratorium expired. Your Way Home in Montgomery County have never before been able to infuse this much emergency rent and utility assistance directly into our community. So thanks to the six diverse six nonprofits who are connected to people in need, we are reaching some of our most vulnerable neighbors. Applications to this program are still being accepted and processed. If you are a renter living in Montgomery County and are having trouble paying your rent or utility bills due to the COVID-19 pandemic, you may be eligible for help. Applications are prioritized for households facing eviction, who have a utility shut-off, households who are at 30% of the area median income are lower, households who have been unemployed for 90 or more days, and households who are renters in a zip code that have been identified as experiencing higher economic impacts due to COVID. A person can apply by dialing 211 or contacting one of the participating nonprofits directly. More information on the program and how someone can apply can be found at www.moncorelease.org. And I need to give a, here, you're gonna see the six participating nonprofits who are processing applications, working directly with the applicant, and delivering the assistance into the community. I need to give a special thank you and shout-out to all of them. They all continue to work really hard and diligently to deliver this assistance. The thanks goes to Aklamo, Pottstown Cluster Religious Communities, CADCOM, Family Services, Manna on Main Street, and YWCA Tri-County Area. And I'm actually now gonna hand it over to Vicente Pietro, who's the Director of the ERIC program at YWCA, to give perspective on what it's been like to deliver this program. Vicente?
Yes, thank you, Kaylee. Good morning, Commissioners and staff. As Kaylee said, my name is Vicente Pietro. I'm the Director of the ERIC program here at the YWCA Tri-County Area. We began this program here at the YW last March, about 11 months ago. Currently, we have two full-time caseworkers. We have a full-time case manager, including myself, on the team, and to process all cases. We reach out normally to about 25 to 30 applicants per week, and it usually takes between seven and 10 days to go from start to finish on any one application. We have serviced, up to date, 662 households in the 11 months. We have distributed $5,586,693.17 in rental assistance. Additionally, we have dispersed $143,784.4 in utility assistance, bringing to a total So, I believe that, you know, this is a wonderful program that infuses direct assistance to needy families in a timely manner. We have a statement from one of our clients, and at this time, I'm gonna hand it over to Stacy Woodland, who is our CEO here at the YW.
Thank you, Vicente. Good morning, Commissioners. It's my honor to be able to read a client's statement. When Kaylee asked YWCA Tri-County Area to talk about our connection to the program and success with the program, she also asked if we would be able to have a client really talk to you about what it meant to receive the support that the ERIC program provides. Part of our mission is dignity for all, and we really didn't want to compromise anybody's dignity by having to be face-to-face with the Commissioners and talk about how they've had to apply for this money, but I'm pleased to read this statement right now. So, "Have you ever received a blessing so grand, you feel your overall health, well-being, and outlook on life changes? I was informed of the ERIC program toward the end of last summer, and the blessing I received from the benefits of this program changed my life for the better. I fell on hard times a few years back and have been struggling to catch up and stay on my bills. I was given an eviction notice out of a home I've been renting since 2006. While waiting on a court date that, by the grace of God, kept being pushed back due to COVID, I had arrears totaling a little over $10,000, and I was informed of this grant that YWCA Tri-County Area received called ERIC. At the time, I was far from being able to pay my arrears and stay current while living paycheck to paycheck and facing eviction. Like many, I was out of work for a while during COVID, suffering from shutdowns, making a bad situation worse. I began to lean on family and friends for support, however, everyone was struggling. I suffer from COPD and chronic lung disease, and stress from COVID-19, and the fear of a pending court date made this sickness even harder for me. I was afraid to be around people and in the public, as I know I have all the underlying ailments that will make it much harder for me to fight COVID. I knew without this support, I would be evicted and facing homelessness. I connected with one of the caseworkers named Molly, whom I will never forget. Molly cared. She showed compassion and understanding. She never judged me or my situation. She remained professional and dedicated to helping me to find out if I was even eligible for the support. And not only did she work on my eligibility, but she also shared with me the many other supports in place at YWCA Tri-County Area, and I have gotten connected in many other ways, including with the Adult Education Center and the advocacy program. Overall, the staff and team at YWCA showed me the true definition of their mission to eliminate racism, empower women, and promote peace, justice, freedom, and dignity for all. I needed help with making copies and filling out the application, as I am not very computer-savvy, and received help from a woman at the front desk of the Childcare Center and another woman at the administrative office on King Street. In conversation, I brag about the great team the YWCA has and share the many opportunities in place, but most specifically, the ERIC program. In closing, the ERIC program saved me. I was not sure what was in store. However, I am a woman of faith. My connections to the Pottstown community and Montgomery County led me to this opportunity, and I was able to stay in my home, and arrangements have been made for me to pay on my arrears. I've since been back to work and will simply say, I sleep, breathe, and overall feel better. I got my smile back, thanks to the ERIC program. Thank you."
Thank you so much, Stacy. And thank you, Commissioners and staff, for giving us the opportunity to speak about this. Your Way Home Public-P private Partnership Structure has helped make this possible, allowing us to really coordinate services, embed equity into the program, monitor data, and implement best practices. I'm really proud and honored to be a part of the program and all it has accomplished so far. That being said, you know, I do know there, there are still challenges, right? The financial assistance in this program can't solve, you know, rent prices or rent burden experienced by Montgomery County renters. The need does still outweigh the resource of this wonderful program, but undoubtedly, ERIC has helped thousands upon thousands of households stay in their homes, offering them relief and safety during the pandemic. So thank you so much.
Well, Ms. Silver, and Stacy and Vicente, thank you so much for joining us today. It's really a pleasure to see you, even virtually, and I just want to thank all of you for your incredible work on this. Our county was able to move this money out to the people that needed it very, very quickly. I think we were one of the top counties in the Commonwealth to move our money out, and I truly attribute it to the decision that we made early on to do this work with our community partners. You know, I think sometimes we forget, early in the pandemic, our community partners, like YWCA and everybody on this list, was in danger of their own survival as COVID hit, and grant funding went away and everything shut down. And so, one of our goals with the money that the county was administering was to use that money to help people here locally. And one of the ways that we did it with this and a couple of other programs was to make sure that we partnered with our existing community partners to give revenue to those partners, and of course, those are our best partners in the community. You are the trusted messengers and the, and the friends, and you have the feet on the ground to understand what is best needed in your communities that you represent. So, I just want to congratulate all of you. I know this has been incredibly heavy lift. I know the paperwork is not easy, and it's really been a huge undertaking for everybody, but you have absolutely helped thousands of people in our community, and I am so grateful for that. And Kaylee, I'm glad you mentioned that, you know, there is still need out there. You know, I've certainly heard from some constituents who have exhausted their funding in this program and are still experiencing housing instability. So, I mean, we all know there's a lot more work that needs to be done, and hopefully we'll have additional opportunities going forward with some of the other funding that is available to us. And then finally, just not to put you on the spot, Kaylee, but for homeowners, I know there is a program for homeowners rather than renters. This program was for renters. The state, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania administers that program. If you could just maybe mention that so folks who are homeowners would know where to go.
Absolutely, you are correct. It's being administered through the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency or- It's being administered through the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency, or PHFA, throughout the state. And you can still find information or a link to that program by visiting the website I mentioned earlier, www.monco-relief.org. If you scroll to the bottom of the webpage that that takes you to, it will have a hyperlink and information directly to the Homeowners Assistance Program.
Great, thanks.
Ms. Silver, I want to thank you for your leadership on this and your staff for really building this. And I know that you're very passionate about this subject and this program, and we all appreciate that and you keep us accountable as well. Ms. Woodland, it's great to see you. Vicente, it's great to meet you. Ms. Woodland, thank you for reading that statement. That really brings it home, to hear from someone who has benefited so greatly. And I know you're here on behalf of all of our community partners who have helped with this, but we just want to say thank you and continue to work.
Thank you for having us.
Great, thanks, y'all. Take care. All right, Mr. Bonner. Update us on ARPA.
All right.
Which is the American Rescue Plan Act.
Absolutely. I'm just going to share a screen. Make sure that comes up. Sorry, can't see this. There's a camera in the way, so just hang on one second. Okay. Thank you for having me today, Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you about the American Recovery Rescue Plan Act allocations in Montgomery County. We are poised, and in the coming weeks, we'll be doing some exciting developments, and I am grateful for the opportunity to provide this update. It's actually fitting that I'm following up with Ms. Silver's program, which is certainly related to this, and the results that she's been able to achieve has certainly been extremely exciting. I wanted to first and foremost start off by defining what the American Rescue Plan Act is. On March 11, 2021, HR 1319 allocated $1.9 trillion nationally across multiple programs. What you see represented on the left is a very large allocation across multiple programs, divided into different acronyms that all of us have heard. One of them is Emergency Rental Assistance. The Esters Fund was primarily devoted to school districts, and then there are a slew of other programs that sometimes fit into existing programs and sometimes were new. Of note today, and the one we and the Recovery Office are focused on at the moment, is the State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, or as you'll hear me abbreviate, SLFRF. The entire allocation in ARPA across the United States to the SLFRF was $350 billion. That is divided into state and local allocations. Ours is the latter. Pennsylvania, for instance, has a state allocation of $77.3 billion that is separate and apart from our allocation. $161.4 million was allocated through the ARPA legislation, through the SLFRF program. To avoid you having to listen to me keep repeating these acronyms, we are referring to this entire 161 as the county's pandemic recovery funds, and you'll hear me reference that throughout the presentation, and you will see this referenced in our website and communication materials. I will not read every bullet here, but I wanted to take time to make sure that what is understood is that the American Rescue Plan Act and the guidance that accompanies it established direction for eligible project expenditures, funding intent, and priorities. And the county has imparted those priorities and that guidance to create its own priorities, which are reflective in how we're going to assess the initiatives that come across our desk. At the highest level, these five bullets, these five priorities are reflected across guidance, compliance, legislative background. And so, just to take a second, they are to respond to the public health emergency, meaning that this funding is designed and was created to respond to the public health emergency, and all expenditures need to keep that, or expenditures in this program need to keep that in mind, such as, you know, programs that would have included there is enhancement of public health data programs, services to address behavioral healthcare needs, such as mental health treatment, substance abuse, and crisis intervention. All of this is acknowledged as eligible project expenditures. As is, at the highest level, a response to the negative economic impacts, as we all know, there were many, caused by the public health emergency, including harm to individuals and households, small businesses, impacted industries. This specifically calls out help to unserved and underserved communities, to support small businesses, to invest in housing in neighborhoods through assistance to those experiencing homelessness, to invest in housing affordability programs, and housing navigation assistance. To replace lost public sector revenue, again, self-explanatory, revenue was lost through pandemic, this funding is designed to help replace that. To provide premium pay for the many essential workers that were identified during this pandemic, whether that's a grocery store employee, a public safety worker, or a healthcare employee, this funding has explicitly said, we are looking to make sure that we're providing premium pay for essential workers. And the fifth area of focus is investment in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Importantly, this is not a blanket infrastructure investment. These are specific areas of infrastructure that this funding is designed to be limited to. Again, those focus areas are what the Recovery Office, in our dispensation of how we are going to plan for the process for taking in ideas and submissions, that guides the work that we do. I'll read this statement on the left. "Montgomery County is specifically interested in ensuring that the pandemic recovery funds are used to ensure an equitable recovery, given the disproportionate impact of the pandemic and economic crisis on certain demographic groups, neighborhoods, and industries over the last two years." These principles at the bottom-left corner guides the work that we do. "We are seeking in all things to be collaborative, effective, equitable, inclusive, impactful, measurable, objective, responsible, transformative, and transparent. To do that, over the past seven months, assisted by county management, assisted with a new team that has come on board since the beginning of the year, we have cultivated awareness of the American Rescue Plan Act funding through town halls, website, our website, social media, and meetings with diverse populations. I would remiss if I did not mention the incredible contributions we've received from our communications department in assisting us with this effort. We've created surveys to capture our funding priorities. We've developed idea and project submission. We're going to talk a little bit about that in a minute. A process to collect both of those with input from large and diverse representation countywide. And we've created an objective scoring matrix for projects. Again, I'll speak about that in a minute. Throughout all of this, our values will guide us to post everything that we do, so the projects that come in, the scores that we apply to them, the rationale behind the decisions we make as we move forward. Highest level, the plan for the pandemic recovery funds is a five-step process. These are accompanied by extremely detailed steps underneath them, but for the purposes of establishing what we're doing, we have been in a community engagement phase for, since early September, and we continue to do that, making sure that people are aware and engage in the process. We have embarked rigorously, as I don't need to tell any of the Recovery Office staff members, in development of the process for all of what will follow: intake of ideas and projects, compliance, understanding how reporting will work. That is what we're engaged in now, and we will continue to be engaged in that as we go, but the main process goes live next week, as we will talk about in a second. Our submission period, as I said, we will be taking in, we want your ideas, we want county ideas, we want individual ideas, we want projects that are fully baked, we want projects that haven't been contemplated before. We have allowed the period of between the end of February, February 28th, to the end of April, to submit that, and we're going to go through a little bit more in detail. After those submissions come in, we develop the recovery plan, which is the compendium of all the projects that will be funded through the project, through this initiative. And then we move, once that plan is adopted, after we gain public feedback on that, into project implementation, during which our role will be to make sure the projects can happen, that they remain on track, they are implementable, they remain in keeping with the spirit that they were approved for. That will take us through the end of 2026, which is the final distribution deadline. "We have designed a process, a unique process, for community members to identify potential pandemic recovery fund opportunities. The process includes two distinct ways to submit a funding request. Those ways are first and foremost to submit a project, a fully developed submission of a specific project that an organization, a business, a faith group, and an individual either intends to carry out themselves or would like to partner with the county to help them carry out. This is similar to what we've done typically across the county for various programs, whether they be from our Planning Commission or from our Housing Office or from our Department of Health and Human Services. We have also made sure, and we've built this into the digital infrastructure that we are going to be publishing next week, that we allow for a broader range of community members, neighborhood groups, or grassroots organizations to submit ideas. The notion there is that they will identify a need in the community that submitters would like the county to consider for funding, but that may not be fully baked out. We will take that information. The county would help turn the idea into a project, if that's appropriate, and support the group in budget development, identifying contractors. We would take that idea, and we want to be sure we're collecting everything that comes across this that's appropriate. Everything is submitted through our digital portal, which is housed in our Open Gov system, through our website, and everything will be posted publicly as we move forward. What this actually means on a step-by-step basis is simply, residents, nonprofits, and for-profits, any organization, individuals can submit either a project idea or a project submission, or both, or multiple, for consideration. All the submissions will be completed through the county website. We have contracted with third-party technical assistance, with a technical assistance provider, to provide assistance to individuals or organizations that require it. The intent of that technical assistance is to help eliminate barriers to submission, whether that's language barriers, whether that's understanding, whether that's I don't have a computer, all of those things represent a barrier to submission. And so, I'm just, I took a quick screenshot of what we're talking about, and what, these are the materials that we'll be distributing beginning next week, to make sure that it's clear to everyone how technical assistance is to be used, when to use it, and what the intent of that work is. After the submission process, after you click Submit on your proposal or ideas, we will review applications for completeness. We will consult experts in the field as needed to make sure that we are clear on what is possible and what is reasonable. We will be communicating back with the submitters to make sure that we understand exactly what your intent was. And then we will apply the objective scoring matrix to these projects. The scoring matrix, we have collected community feedback, and we're in the process, that will be published upfront. The matrix itself was informed by rigorous community input over the life of the community engagement process. And then our draft recovery plan, which will be aired at a meeting like this one in June, will be published for feedback. Again, as I said earlier, the recovery plan is the list of all the projects that are funded through the pandemic recovery fund. Our key evaluation criteria, as you see here, again, will be applied to all projects. First and foremost, we must meet the funding source requirements. I mentioned some bullets about the guidance that was created to make sure that the intent of the legislation, the intent of our funding program is clear, and the intent of the county's dispensation of these funds is part of how we are going to evaluate these proposals. We need to be sure that the best projects have the potential for systems-level impact. These are things that will change the way that we or the community, that improve the way that we do business. We focus on underserved communities. We pay specific attention, as is required by the U.S. Department of Treasury, to the equity of both our approach and the expenditure of funds as they go out. We make sure we have the ability to measure impact from all the projects and ideas that we've put forth for approval. We make sure that people understand that this is a one-time funding injection. We want to be transformative with those projects, but we also want, don't want to create unfunded responsibilities for people to then take up after this funding expires at the end of 2026. Make sure that the project budget and timeline for projects is reasonable and that the project is sustainable, meaning that if we do this one-time injection, what's going to happen to it after we, you know, we don't want to leave a lot of vacant buildings lying around. Key dates, there are two categories here. I'm going to start with the, what's on the right, the pandemic recovery fund parameters. As I mentioned earlier, all funding must be obligated by the end of December 2024. By obligated, we mean it doesn't have to have gone out the door, but we need to have our all contractors, everything lined up and obligated by that point. All funds must be expended, liquidated, and the period of performance ends by December 31st, 2026. It's important that people keep this in mind, and we will make, you know, no secret of this, simply because we want to be sure the projects are implementable within the timeframe. If they are not, we give the money back and we don't complete the project. So, our work will be to be sure that part of feasibility is to be sure that all the projects can be done within this timeframe. Our submission process key dates, we will be conducting three town halls next week. We'll show a little bit more detail in a minute, with, again, thanks to our communications office. Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday evening at 6:30, there are three different town halls. Tuesday's is English, with an, all of them have an in-person option, they will all be run via Zoom. Wednesday's is in Spanish, and Thursday's is in cooperation with the Asian American Coalition, will be in English, but will lead to subsequent meetings in individual languages. Our submission period opens Monday, February 28th. When I say it opens, that means on our website, there will be a button that says Apply Here. That button will appear on February 28th, and it will shut off on Saturday, April 30th, as of now. The draft plan will be presented to the public for feedback in May. So, our role here is to make sure that we are taking in these submissions, what I'm going to call leveling them, making sure that people understand, we consolidate what needs to be. If there's two related projects, maybe we talk to people about how to do that, but then it leads to the plan being published in May. The final plan will be approved by our county commissioners in June, and the project limitation begins in July. I mentioned the town halls. This flyer has been distributed and will continue to be distributed to community lists. As it says, there's virtual signup links. We are grateful for everyone who can register and attend that Zoom call. There will be plenty of time for questions. We will go through in detail the process. We'll show, the website will show the forms that we'll be using, and walk through exactly what will be needed. Our next steps from here, please, everyone do visit moncopa.org/recoveryoffice. We are in the process of updating this website to include all of the information regarding the submission period, which is, as I said, goes live on February 28th. Our town hall presentations, as I just spoke about, will begin next week, but will also continue. We'll be running repeated town halls to be sure that throughout the 60-day submission period, people are aware that there's other questions that come up, if, we want to be sure the technical assistance provider is being accessed, and that's clear. And so, we want to be sure we're checking in as we go. Our submission process opens, as I said, in late February, and will end in the end of April. I appreciate the opportunity to present today. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Well, this is exciting, and it's, I know this represents a tremendous amount of work for you and your team, and it's great to see this coming together, and very much look forward to next steps.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Tom. All right, we will move on to resolutions. Mr. Edman.
Right here.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time this morning. Before you, for consideration, it is a three-year community planning assistance contract with Horsham Township. As you know, these contracts allow the Planning Commission to provide planning work to our municipalities. So, this is exciting for the county, as the MCPC has never had a full three-year contract with Horsham Township. And Horsham is one of our largest employment centers here in the county. So, here are the details. The contract runs from January 1st, 2022, this year, to December 31st, 2024. That's three full years. We'll be updating their Township Comprehensive Plan from 2011 and conducting extensive public engagement at their request. An important part of this work also includes integrating all of the Wool Grove Naval Air Station's planning work and development complexities into this plan. Veteran community planner, Maury Lee Bice, will be spearheading this effort with some assistance from one of our newer planners. And the total cost of the three-year contract is $102,816. As always, Horsham Township will be paying one-half of this cost back to the county, which is $51,708. Thank you. Any questions?
Motion on the floor. A motion, I will move that the Montgomery County Commissioners hereby approve the Municipal Clowning Assistance Contract for Horsham Township, outlined by Assistant Director of Transportation, Mr. Matt Edman, and that the proper county officials are hereby authorized and directed to execute the same. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we're going to move on to an appointment and reappointment to the Board of Directors of the Montgomery County Norristown Public Library. I will move that Angelique Hitten be appointed, and that Kathy and Sweeney and Jules Veluzio be reappointed to the Board of Directors of the Montgomery County Norristown Public Library, for terms to begin immediately and to expire on February 17th, 2025, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes?
I'm a negative vote.
Okay, we have a roll call, please.
Chair, a question.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawrence.
Aye.
Commissioner Gail.
Opposed.
Motion carries. Next, Commissioners' appointment. Next, Commissioner's appointment to the Montgomery County Parks Trails and Heritage Services Advisory Board. I will move that Robert Olwell be appointed to the Montgomery County Parks Trails and Heritage Services Advisory Board, for a term to begin immediately, and to expire on February 17th, 2026, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners, and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Ms. Perdue. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. We should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioner's Department's personnel list. It is a three-page document dated Wednesday, February 16th, 2022, with a timestamp of 12:00 PM. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for, and are presented for consideration.
Thank you. I will move to approve the February 17th, 2022 personnel presentation, as given by Director of Human Resources, Ms. Donna Perdue, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. All right, Ms. O'Malley, advertisement of bids on RFPs.
Yes, we have bid on behalf of assets and infrastructure for bridge repairs. The successful responder will provide repairs to the Penny Pack Trail Bridge along the northern extension of the regional trail corridor. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Two, bid on behalf of assets and infrastructure for dredging services. The successful responder will provide four bay dredging services for Lock 60 in Montclair Upper Providence Township. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Three, RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for a stop school violence program. The successful responder will design and implement an educational program for students, teachers, and school districts to prevent violence and cyberbullying. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. Four, RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for technical assistance consultants. The successful responder will provide technical assistance to the Housing and Community Development Division for plans and reports that are submitted to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. Five, RFP on behalf of Human Resources for Training and Leadership Development Services. The successful responders will provide training services and leadership development workshops for county departments as needed. Contracts will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. All RFPs and bids are available on the county's purchasing website at www.monaco PA.org/purchasing.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding request for the advertisement of bids and RFPs, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, awards of contract for the county.
One, contract award Health and Human Services Training Program, the Deveraux Foundation of King of Prussia, PA, $7,050. Contract provides a student assistance program for Montgomery County school districts. RFP 2153 was viewed by 29 providers with three responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder. Contract is for a period of two years with three optional annual renewal terms. Two, contract award Information and Technology Solutions Maintenance and Support, New Year Technologies of Icelandic New York, $297,508.48. Contract provides a maintenance and support agreement for the OVAI Network Infrastructure and Telephone System. Services are available through Pennsylvania Education Purchasing Program for Microcomputers Contract. Three, contract award Information and Technology Services Document Management System, RSM US LLP of Davenport, Iowa, $2,347,002. Contract provides a replacement of the current countywide electronic document management system. RFP 2109 was viewed by 131 providers with eight responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder. Contract is for a period of one year with nine optional annual renewal terms. Four, contract award Information and Technology Solutions Staff Augmentation Services for SharePoint Projects, RSM US LLP of Davenport, Iowa, $250,000. Contract provides the augmentation of Montgomery County Information and Technology Solutions Development Staff for SharePoint Projects. RFP 2163 was viewed by 111 providers with 21 responses. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder. Contract is for a period of one year with four optional annual renewal terms. Five, contract award Information and Technology Solutions Staff Augmentation Services for Dynamics Projects, RSM US LLP of Davenport, Iowa, $300,000. Contract provides the augmentation of Montgomery County Information and Technology Solutions Development Staff for Dynamics Development of projects for various Montgomery County Departments. RFP 2167 was viewed by 105 providers with 16 responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder. Contract is for a period of one year with four optional annual renewal terms. Six, contract award Information and Technology Solutions Maintenance, Infra Incorporated of Alpharetta, Georgia, $337,450.2. Contract provides the annual cloud-based maintenance for the county's proprietary financial system. Contract term is 3/14/2022 to 3/13/2023. Seven, contract award Information and Technology Solutions Web Hosting Services, Rico USA Incorporated of Malvern, PA, $92,500. Contract provides centralized web-to-print services for use by the county print shop. Services are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Eight, contract awards Planning Commission Appraisal Services, multiple providers. Contract provides real estate appraisal services to the county on an as-needed basis. RFP 2144 was viewed by 11 providers with two responses received. Contracts are awarded to all responding providers. Contracts over a period of one year with four optional annual renewal terms. Awarded providers are Indian Valley Appraisal Company of Sodderton, PA, Everly Appraisal Services LLC of East Earl, PA. Nine, contract award Planning Commission Construction, Allen Myers LP of Warsester, PA, $14,077,777. Contract provides for the widening and reconstruction of Ridge Pike in Springfield Township and White Marsh Township in Montgomery County and the city of Philadelphia. Specification 6469 was viewed by 41 providers with four responses received. Contract is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Ten, contract award Public Safety Recording System Maintenance, Carousel Industries of North America Incorporated of Exeter, Rhode Island, $66,902. Contract provides support service for the 911 Communications Recording System. Contract is for the period of 1/1/2022 through 12/31/2022. System is proprietary. Eleven, contract amendment Assets and Infrastructure Engineering, Penone Associates Incorporated of King of Prussia, PA, $9,863. Original contract provided a detailed study to determine if dredging of the Deep Creek Lake at Green Lane Park would be required to preserve longevity and environmental integrity of the lake. Amendment revises the specification to update the dredge methods required for the project. Twelve, contract amendment District Courts Janitorial Services, Clean Net of Philadelphia of King of Prussia, PA, $6,890. Original contract provided janitorial services to include cleaning supplies for 18-county leased district court facilities. Amendment provides additional cleaning services for relocated District Court 38208. Thirteen, contract amendment Public Safety Vehicle, Emergency Vehicles Incorporated of Lake Park, Florida, $4,386. Contract provided a hazmat response vehicle for use by the county hazmat team for response to hazardous materials incidents. Amendment provides updates and optimization to the electrical system and additional fabrication for equipment organization. Fourteen, contract amendment Public Safety Rescue Training Props, Nice Construction Services Incorporated of Sellersville, PA, $18,307.59. Contract provided onsite construction for vehicle and trench rescue training props at the public safety training campus. Amendment provides increased cost of construction materials due to supply chain demand. Two contracts, five contract renewals, and 30 amendments for Health and Human Services. Providers and services are listed at the end of the agenda and the back of the room.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment?
Yes, I'd like to request that the motion on the floor is amended to separate contracts towards number 15 on the agenda, which are the contracts in the back of the room. One of the contracts is for three vendors that conduct COVID-19 contact tracing, and that date goes up until September of 2022. And from my experience, the contact tracing has not been effective, and it's a waste of taxpayer dollars. So, I request that that's amended.
All right, I will support that. So, we will vote on items 1 through 14. Any additional comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we will vote on item number 15, and we will have a roll call vote, please, Ms. Washington.
Chair, push.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawrence.
Aye.
Commissioner Gail.
Opposed.
Motion carries. All right, Ms. O'Malley, awards of contract for voter services.
One, contract renewal Supplies William Penn Printing Company of Pittsburgh, PA, $35,000. Contract provides election day supply boxes for the primary and general elections. This is the second of four optional annual renewals covering the 2022 primary and general elections, as per RFP 1948. Two, contract renewal Equipment Transport, Clemer Moving and Storage Incorporated of Telford, PA, $163,328. Contract provides the transport of election equipment to and from the various election districts within the county for the primary and general elections. This is the second of four optional annual renewal terms covering the 2022 primary and general elections, as per RFP 1904. Three, contract renewal Voter Services Printing and Mailing Services, NPC Incorporated of Clayesburg, Pennsylvania, $1,500,000. Contract provides ballot printing and mailing services for the primary and general elections. This is the second of five optional annual renewals covering the 2022 primary and general elections, as per RFP 2037. Four, contract renewal Poll Book Printing, NPC Incorporated of Clayesburg, PA, $35,119. Contract provides the furnishing and delivering of voter registration poll books for approximately 426 voting precincts within Montgomery County for 2022 primary and general elections, as per RFP 2108. This is the first of four optional annual renewal terms. Five, contract amendment Voting System Dominion Voting Systems Incorporated of Denver, Colorado, $129,063.3. Original contract provides the renewal of software licenses, hardware warranties, and election support services for the 2021 term. Amendment provides services required for high-speed scanning training, state-ordered recount of the November 2021 general election, and shipping charges for equipment carts.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes?
Negative vote here.
Okay, all right. Ms. Washington.
Chair, push.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawrence.
Aye.
Commissioner Gail.
Opposed.
Motion carries. Next, awards of contract for Hurricane Ida under emergency procurement.
One, Response Services Equipment Assets and Infrastructure Perkins TP Trailers Incorporated of Limerick, PA, $25,070. Contract provides a mobile office trailer for Green Lane Park to replace the ranger station that was destroyed during Hurricane Ida. Two, Response Services Assets and Infrastructure Eagleville Fence Company Incorporated of Eagleville, PA, $33,976. Contract provides fencing repairs required for areas of the trail in Conshohagin along the Skooka River Trail, which sustained damages during Hurricane Ida. Three, Response Services Health and Human Services GoGo Grandparent of San Francisco, California. Contract provides a transportation assistance program for individuals affected by Hurricane Ida. This program will address providing transportation for individuals in need from hotel accommodations in relation to school, work, or housing inquiries. Rise for 27 cents per minute and a management fee of $10 per month per person. Four, Response Services Amendment Public Safety Services, DRC Emergency Services LLC of Galveston, Texas, $7,290,907.58. Original contract provides disaster debris clearance and removal services for Montgomery County in the event of an emergency. Amendment provides for continued response services necessary for debris cleanup due to Hurricane Ida. Continued services include removal of damaged appliances, furniture, debris from damaged homes, hazardous household waste, removal of damaged hazardous trees, and removal of debris and damaged trees from public areas, parkland, trails, and waterways.
All right, thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we have awards of contract for the Southeast Pennsylvania Regional Task Force.
One, contract award Software Licensing Infrastructure Incorporated of Salt Lake City, Utah, $26,000. Contract provides the Canvas Cloud software subscription for Montgomery County. Canvas Cloud allows the sustainment of systems that provide realistic and managed distance training for first responders. Software is proprietary. Two, contract award Digital X-Ray Platform Locust Imaging LLC of Windsor, Colorado, $48,395.98. Contract provides a digital X-Ray platform for the Montgomery County bomb robot. The system will scrutinize and analyze suspected improvised explosive devices in order to formulate render-safe procedures, and to inform leadership of potential impacts to citizens and property. System is proprietary. Three, contract award Digital X-Ray Machine Locust Imaging LLC of Windsor, Colorado, $52,168.32. Contract provides a portable digital X-Ray machine for the Philadelphia Bomb Disposal Unit. The X-Ray machine allows a faster imaging of suspected unattended items or devices utilizing on-scene Wi-Fi during large-scale events. Equipment is proprietary. Contract award Training Safeway Incorporated of Landham, Maryland, $29,750. Contract provides a risk-based response to battery emergencies training for the regional counties. Training is available through an omni-cooperative contract. Five, contract award Software, IDSI International Incorporated of Fort Lee, New Jersey, $70,000. Contract provides SARO software sustainment for the regional counties. Software equips risk professionals and site-first responders with updated information about chemical inventory, chemical risk profiles, and hazardous analysis completed by site planners for each stored site. Software is proprietary.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract on behalf of the Southeast Pennsylvania Regional Task Force, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. O'Malley. Any closing Commissioners' comments? No, okay. Then, I will announce that our next Board of Commissioners' meeting will be held on March 3rd, 2022, and I will move to adjourn the February 17th, 2022, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned, and we will move to Salary Board. Mr. Landauer is here for the controller today. Thank you. We will begin with public comment. Ms. Francisco, is there any public comment on Salary Board? No, okay, thank you. Then, Ms. Perdue.
Thank you. Good morning, members of Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a three-page document dated Wednesday, February 16th, 2022, with a timestamp of 12:00 PM. Of note, we have six retirees, Mark Fennell from Assets and Infrastructure, after 13 years, Christina Adoviano from Assets and Infrastructure, after 32 years, Jeffrey Adoviano from Assets and Infrastructure, after 23 years, Patricia Calicchio from Children and Youth, after 16 years, Alexandria Paserek from Early Intervention, after 26 years, and Renee Roman from Senior Services, after 18 years. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for, and are presented for Salary Board consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the February 17th, 2022 Salary Board presentation, as given by Director of Human Resources, Ms. Donna Perdue, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Landauer. Is there a second?